Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Mr. Bunch, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the adoption of our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. A second.
Okay, please cast your ballot. We got four of us.
I'll reload one more time and see if it...
Okay, I think we're...I think that's gonna pass. I think the agenda is going to pass. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, proclamations. We get to recognize one of our fine community members who has spent many years serving us on the Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee. Mr. Michael Bunch, if you'd please join me at the podium.
Please switch away.
This is good.
Thank you.
First of all, our traditional bottle of wine from all of us to you. So, thank you very much for all the time and effort you gave, your personal time, to help support us with the Measure C Oversight Committee. And I will go ahead and read this certificate of appreciation. This is a certificate of appreciation in recognition of Michael Bunch, Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee. The Town Council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee, with your first term commencing in January 2014 and subsequent reappointment, serving through the committee's official disbanding December 6, 2018. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
There you go. Would you like to share any thoughts?
I just hope that what we did with the Financial Oversight Committee was actually enough to mitigate the rain issues, but I'm not certain. Hopefully it will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well, and there's the family right behind us.
They got it right.
Boy, you didn't get here with any time to spare, did you? Well, really, thank you, because we know when any member of the family is committed to serving the town, it means all of you are affected. And so, thank you very much for sharing Michael and his efforts for these last several years. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Okay.
Yes, there you go. Next up, we will go on to public comment. Wait, before you go, is there any public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, well, there goes our...there goes our public. Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we will move on to our consent calendar. And I am going to pull Item 7B just for additional information. But if there isn't any discussion or is there a motion to approve Items 7A, C, and D on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept A, C, and D on the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we've got...
And aye.
There we go. Verbal and digital works. That's great. Thank you. That all passes. 7B, I just wanted to recognize, this is more for information about the status of some legislation now in Washington. There's a bill, HR 530, and this came up when I was in DC last week. Congressman Anna Eshu from Silicon Valley has proposed a bill that would overturn the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, regulations that would severely restrict local government from regulating the deployment of 5G wireless infrastructure. And it speaks directly to the language that we're proposing in our ordinance. I wanted to just recognize that we did receive a letter of appreciation from Congressmember Eshu, supporting her efforts. It's still ongoing, but every meeting that I was a part of on Capitol Hill, we brought this up, very first item. There's quite a bit of Democratic support. There is no Republican support yet, but that effort's ongoing. Our main issue was to explain, we're not against wireless communication at all, or the telecommunications industry, but maintaining the ability to regulate and control some of the impacts. We've had that conversation here before, but I just wanted to recognize that since we are, I think, about to approve this ordinance, and the language that may be a short term to have this ordinance, if it's overruled at the national level, but hopefully this will be applicable going forward. So with that, I entertain a motion for approval of consent calendar Item 7B. Unless there are questions about that from the council. Is there a motion to approve 7B?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Please cast your ballot. Thank you. That's unanimously approved. We'll move on. We have no presentations. We do have a public hearing on our master fee schedule update. Nathan?
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, this evening is a resolution that would adopt several fees and updates to the master fee schedule. What I'd like to do is just give a little bit of background on each of the fees prior to the public hearing and the vote of the council. So, first, the first of the fees is related to cannabis delivery permit processing. In November of 2017, the Yountville Town Council adopted Ordinance 17-467. And this ordinance established the town's policies regarding the cultivation of cannabis, dispensaries, delivery within the town. And pursuant to that ordinance, the mobile delivery of cannabis is permitted, but in order to deliver in town limits, however, the provider must obtain and hold a cannabis delivery permit that is issued by the town of Yountville. So, staff recommends an application fee as part of this permitting process. There's a considerable staff impact in reviewing these applications, particularly because the applications require a copy of the applicant's employee rosters. Staff also needs to review all the application attachments, including proofs of insurance, state licenses, the approvals from the generating jurisdiction that the business is located in, and other attachments. And it's anticipated that initially, the staff cost would...could range from two hours of analyst time and plus an hour of planning director time, with possibility of extra time of the town manager and additional planning director time. Total cost of approximately $500 is the recommended amount for this processing permit. It's anticipated, though, that with the review of these, all these applications, as well as the ongoing monitoring, the staff impact could likely be more than $500 per permit. However, due to direction received from the state of California, it's the goal of town, of the town, to really make this process as simple and non-cumbersome as possible, while still performing the due diligence that the town needs to ensure that the businesses are all legal and licensed. So, staff proposes an application fee for all delivery businesses of $500, and each or thereafter, a renewal fee of $250. Now, the second set of fees relates to small wireless communication facilities. Just March 5th of this year, the Yountville Town Council introduced and waived the first reading of Ordinance 19-480, and the second reading and adoption just occurred a few minutes ago. As the staff report on that ordinance explains, a recent FCC order does restrict the application in recurring annual fees that the town can charge in relation to these small cell facilities. And all fees must be a reasonable approximation of the state and local government costs. They can only factor in objectively reasonable costs and be no higher than fees charged to similarly situated competitors in similar situations. So, with all that, after saying this is what your fees can do, the FCC order then says, "So make it $500." So, it provides that $500 for a single application that contains up to five 5G small cell sites, and then an additional $100 for each additional small cell site. And so, the resolution before you has those same numbers, per the recommendation of the FCC. It also contains an independent consultant deposit, which would be the actual cost. So, if the application comes in and requires a level of expertise review that is not currently employed by the town, the town may contract with a consultant to review said applications. And it would be expected that the applicant would pay that same amount that whatever the town took on in order to process that and work with the consultant. And then furthermore, per the FCC order, an annual renewal fee of $270 is also recommended. That's the same amount given in the FCC order. Then the last set of fees on the resolution this evening is related to the sidewalk vending permit, which again was tied to Ordinance 19-481, which was first introduced and waived on March 5th of this year, and the second reading and adoption just occurred minutes ago tonight. That ordinance requires sidewalk vendors to obtain a sidewalk vending permit prior to operating, and the permit would be valid for a period of one year unless revoked. And staff recommends an application fee as part of this permitting process as well, as there will be a staff impact in reviewing the applications, ensuring compliance with all the permit conditions, as the applicants would be operating in the town's right-of-way, ensuring that they have the insurance in order to conduct business in the town's right-of-way. And it's anticipated that the staff cost would be one hour of analyst time, one hour of planning director time, and about a half hour of town manager time. The total cost would also be approximately $500. So, that's...those are the recommended amounts that are in the resolution. The resolution also says that a copy of the staff report would be an exhibit, as the staff report detailed the calculation on how these fees were all determined. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Town Attorney Gary Bell is also here to answer any questions on a more legal matter.
Great, thank you. Other questions before I open the public hearing? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Steele. I don't know if these questions are for you or for the town attorney or both, but I just want to get straight in my mind. And I'm gonna group the small cell and the cannabis. Those...that $500 initial fee plus the annual fee is imposed on us, that cap is imposed on us by either state law or federal regulation, whether or not it costs us more to do that.
Yeah, Gary may hop in, but the FCC order, when it regards to the small cell one, because the order said these are the recommended amounts, any amount more than that, even if it more accurately captures the cost for us to process that application, does open the town up for some challenges, because it's more than what the FCC said is the typical amount. The cannabis one is in the same one, if the...some of the more recent cannabis workshops that have been done on the state level, you've been seeing a really strong encouragement to make the fees as simple, straightforward, and small as possible. And so, even though on...especially at the beginning of these programs, which are relatively new, there may be a greater staff impact than that fully captures it. It's important, it's a goal of the town to be consistent with state expectations.
And so, if we track our time, still staying on those two, if we track our time and we find out that objectively, reasonably, we spend more than that, what are our options in that regard?
Gary can talk about that process.
Yeah, so, for the cannabis and the sidewalk vending, both of those can be increased to recoup the full cost. State law always allows the town to cover its actual costs, which is why some fees are a deposit and then recouping the total cost later on. For the small cell wireless fees, because that's set by federal law, even though state law allows the recovery, it would still be susceptible as a challenge under federal law if it exceeded the amounts that are in the FCC order. The FCC order gives a presumption that that's reasonable and provides language for challenging fees that are over that.
And so, when I look at these, we're charging $500 a year to a sidewalk vendor, because that's an annual fee. And for cannabis, we're charging $500 and then only $250 a year. So, could you square those up for me on as what staff time will be the difference in that?
Certainly. In regards to the sidewalk vending, it's anticipated that the staff time will be the same every year for renewals, because they would still need...staff would be required to look at the insurance documents of each of these businesses. If they're vending food, make sure they're meeting all of the certifications that county health gives them in order to vend food. And because that may change year to year, it's the same amount of staff time year to year to verify compliance with the town's ordinance and the whole permit processing. In regards to cannabis, because the business is pretty much the same, it's just a really quick review of their employee rosters to make sure they're still compliant, and a quick review to make sure they're still compliant with state. So, the...it's anticipated that it's gonna be a little bit less. Also, it's because the state talking about cannabis permits in particular, they're saying, "Make that as simple and straightforward as possible." So, in part, it's also a response to that.
And if we track our time, we can revisit these fees, not that we would, but we can revisit them at our discretion during the year?
Yeah, following the process that Gary just said, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, invite any member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for further discussion by council. And to the Vice Mayor's point, that's exactly what I was referring to a moment ago, as it relates to the FCC's order and the proposed legislation
that would change that. So, we'll be monitoring that development over this next...over these next several months, certainly, in case it impacts our ordinance. So, we'll need to review it regardless, because of the legislation. Any other comments from council? Is there action to be proposed by council?
All right, I'll propose that we adopt the Resolution Number 19-3541, adopting fees and charges related to cannabis delivery permits, small wireless facility permits, and sidewalk vending permits, and authorizing the town staff to update the master fee schedule regarding these fees and charges.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next up, we're gonna go on to our administrative Item 10A, Housing Element Progress Report. Changing seats.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you the town's annual report to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, where the town reports on its progress in meeting the goals and programs of the housing element. And for the most part, this is a status quo report, because we maintain and continue the goals and programs that are in the housing element. However, we also report on new housing elements. And what's different in this year's report from previous year's reports is that HCD used to only require that building permit issuance was reported. This year, where they are asking for the entitlements and for building permit finals. And they're tracking properties by address, so they'll be looking at them from year to year. What we're seeing in this year's report is that there is a trend for new ADUs. They represent the bulk of our new housing units, and that's a trend that we expect to continue in years to come. We know that we are meeting and exceeding the town's goals for moderate and above moderate units in regards to our RENA allocation, but that we are falling short on the low and the very low units. Although, it is important to note that we have one in each of those two categories, and that is likely enough to keep us off of the SB 35 streamlining list. And many jurisdictions are on that list, and it imposes quicker processing timelines and even administrative approval in some cases. So, luckily, we'll be off of that list, as far as we know, based on small steps in meeting that progress. We are concerned, though, that we'll have trouble closing the gap on those low and very low units, because we don't generally see that type of development unless we have a developer come in and develop a neighborhood, and the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance triggers a level of low and very low income unit...units. From those part, we just see infill development in town. So, that's something that we are monitoring over the course of the year. But we are in good standing, and we're presenting the report to you to authorize its release to HCD.
Thank you. Questions? Yes. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Yes, Sandra. So, do the ADUs qualify as fulfilling that RENA objective of the low and affordable units?
No, they are not classified as low or very low, because they're not deed restricted. If we were to have a policy where a property owner were willing to restrict it for reduced fees, or for a contribution for construction, those units, it could count. They fall into the moderate income category, simply by the size and type of unit they are. They're not the above moderate. So, while we're counting them, we've already met and exceeded our number, so they're just extras, really.
I see. Thank you.
They may not be extras for very long, because I was gonna share, and I will after we have some more questions, I'll share a little bit more legislative information that could be changing the RENA numbers significantly. But other questions on the staff report? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Director Liston. So, and thank you for my email education. I always appreciate your taking time to respond. So, I just want to make sure I understood correctly. In 2018, we had three deed-restricted homes that aged out of deed restrictions. Is that correct?
We've lost some. I don't think it's been three.
Okay, maybe not three, but we had some that aged out due to...and then, just to clarify, and we'll probably talk about this in the next one, but some of the Measure S money that we're currently receiving may go into some...could go into some of these kind of projects that we're talking about needing to fund for the low, very low, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no members of the public, we'll just keep talking about this. What I wanted to share, I was gonna share it in reports, but I think it's pertinent now, just on League of California Cities Executive Officer Call on Monday, we learned more about Governor Newsom's trailer bill, following his budget. The pertinent part here is apparently our RENA numbers that you just referenced, the 17 that we have in this cycle, could be increasing 30, 40, up to 50% in this next cycle. They are basing it out on new criteria. When asked what the new criteria is, they say, "We don't know yet." The state's getting really good about that. But in part, it's supposed to factor in the amount of households in a jurisdiction, and the amount of households that are paying more than 50% of their income to housing. And so, that's where they're trying to really drive the lower income unit production, because that's higher than they feel the average person should be paying for their...for their rent or their mortgage. Some of the other information I have here isn't as pertinent to this, but all indications our RENA numbers are going to increase soon, and somewhat substantially. You know, 50% for us might be another eight or nine units, but like you say, it's hard to find the opportunities for the deed-restricted units in such a small community. So, that's gonna be our effort going forward. So, that's just a little something to add to the staff report. Are there any other comments about this item? Is there a motion? Are we...you don't really need a motion for this. It's just a progress report. You do need a motion. Okay?
There's a resolution. Yes.
Ah, I have to get back to that. Okay?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 19-3540, approving and authorizing staff to submit the 2018 Housing Element Progress Report to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote. Thank you, everyone. That passes unanimously. Next up, establish a Workforce Housing Oversight Committee. And Steve's not here to do that. So, Gary, are you doing that?
Yeah, so, I did not draft this resolution, so I'm not very familiar with it, but can certainly read it. As you all know, Measure S requires the establishment of a five-member oversight committee that shall meet at least once annually and provide its meeting minutes and advice to the council on how to spend those Measure S funds. And if Sandra's more familiar with the mechanics of this, okay, so, there are three Yountville community residents, one Yountville lodging business representative, and one Yountville non-designated business representative, each serving for two-year terms. An application process, similar to the other boards and commissions that the council's created. There'll be interviews and appointments made. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll also volunteer, the Vice Mayor, or myself potentially, to add a little more, since we've been meeting with the town manager on the content of this. So, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bell. It's pretty self-explanatory. I think we tried to just take the discussion that we had deciding to have an oversight committee for the Measure S funds, and we had...the council had chosen five members, and so, that's why we split it out, three residents and two businesses. We were particularly interested in having a lodging member, if that such a person is available or willing, because it is a tax on lodging. We also...you'll see you have a slightly amended resolution. The...we wanted the resident members to have a primary address within the Yountville town limits, and we wanted the business members to have primary employment in a Yountville business. We have listed on Exhibit A, which has a lot of the meat on it, the specific duties, and basically, they are going to review the receipts and expenditures of the Measure S funds, review the status of the Measure S programs and services. And that would include, some of the Measure S funds may be combined with other funds, like the housing opportunity. That would include tracing those Measure S funds through to other...to programs that combine funds. And then annually, we are asking that they make a report and a presentation to Town Council. And the...we've staggered the terms, so we'll have some continuity. I think the first three seats will be for two years, and two seats for one year, and then everybody's two years after that. And I think that's about it.
Yeah, that's a very good summary, in addition to our town attorney, who had to wing it.
Sorry, Gary.
You could've joined us for all of our meetings, but that's okay. Any questions from the council?
I have a few.
Yes?
So, concerning the membership, so, first of all, Yountville Lodging Business Representative? So, this was a tax that was voted on by the voters. It wasn't necessarily a TID, to where the hotels themselves said that they would impose this tax on themselves, and then use those funds for this. So, my concern with this is ultimately, we could have a representative who doesn't have a stake in the game, who's not from the area, who doesn't...who isn't aware of this, who's only showing up for the meetings, who isn't invested in this. So, I do have a concern with the Lodging Business Representative. As a member who is going to contribute to what they feel is the best for Yountville and what's going on here, simply, and I believe, and to circle back, yes, they're being taxed, but this was voted on by the voters, so it doesn't necessarily mean that they need to have the exact say in this. And who's to say they're not driving in from somewhere else? So, that's my first thought. My second one is the Yountville Community Resident...resident committee members must have a primary address within the Yountville town limits. Three people. My concern with that is, once again, the dynamics and the makeup of our community is changing. This, if we...I don't think that we should lessen the position of those who might be a second homeowner here, given the amount of people who have become...who are second homeowners, who have become primary homeowners. You know, I still see plenty of second homeowners in this community, who are invested in this community, and want what's best for this community, and that's why they have a home here. So, that's also a concern of mine. And at the very least, if we do, we might want to just say two have to have a primary residence, and one is...and the third is a resident here. So, I don't want to, through the Lodging Business Representative and the community residents, narrow down our scope and our ability to get good feedback and good participation on this committee. So, that's my thoughts.
And I have a comment, too.
Thank you. Hold on just a second. So, this is just... So this is just identifying the staff report, something that might relate to your comments. The item on, toward the bottom of Page 2 of 4, a committee responsibility, it's not within the purview of the committee to direct staff, recommend particular project or initiatives, or define the scope of the project or initiative. This is strictly oversight of the projects, initiatives, and that are under the purview of the town council. But to your point, if we're limiting too much the participation pool, then maybe we can reconsider that. So, Councilmember Mueller?
My comments are on the same line. In terms of resident committee members must have a primary address within the town limits, seems like in our other committees, we just ask them on the form, "Do you live in Yountville?" And this seems a bit strenuous in terms of, you're probably going to have to demonstrate somehow where your primary address is. I think the only thing is the homeowner's exemption that would really prove that. You can get a DMV license if you live here part-time. You can, you know, vote if you're here, you know, part-time, depends on when your voter's registration is. So this just seems a little more than we possibly need, unless there's something about this Measure A that I don't really understand. But I know we just, I mean, about Measure S, we just had somebody who, you know, finished the term on the Measure A oversight, and I don't remember all of this. Also, the part about non-Yountville residents whose primary employment is with a Yountville business. Well, you know, you might have a situation, I'm just going to use Councilmember Durham, if he wasn't on the council, he's a Yountville resident, and if he had a Yountville business here, I think they should just apply, and, you know, I guess the town council will be interviewing them, but, you know, I think we can make a decision at that time whether they're fulfilling, or they could apply as a resident or a business. So it just seems a, more than I think we really need here, kind of to me, because I do think that sometimes it's a bit of a struggle getting a lot of good candidates, and I'd rather see good candidates that kind of fit into whatever the majority of us think applying to this than make it too restrictive right up front. And I'm not, I'm not sure, so, so these were, Gary, these are comments from...
I'm going to invite the Vice Mayor, because I know some of this language that you're both questioning was introduced by the Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay. That answers my second question.
Explain some of the rationale behind it, and then if Gary has anything to add to that. But Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'll speak first to Councilmember Durham's comments on the out-of-town employer, employee resident, participants. That's one reason I added primary, is because I did not, it says, "Primary employment is in Yountville." That's exactly why I added that, is because we, as we talked about it as a committee, we were more interested in someone who had a stake in it, who came here every day, and their primary employment is here. So that's why we added that. As far as resident committee members must have a primary address within the Yountville town limits, I do agree with Councilmember Mueller that the application typically says, "Where do you live? What's your address?" And certainly, I don't see any need, and I would not ask for and have not asked for any proof of where they live. They just put their address down. Again, it went to, I mean, I started here as a second homeowner, certainly. Obviously, I love this town. I've ended up here. That can happen. But I don't think I would have been a good choice for this committee during the two years that I owned a home and traveled back and forth. So I think that because we're looking at housing, because we're facing a lot of very thorny issues, I just, that's why I suggested to the subcommittee that we have primary residents here. I certainly don't intend to cut anyone out, but it seems to me, this is a different qualitative kind of thing, and it is just an oversight committee. And I don't mean just in a bad way. The oversight is very important. But as the mayor pointed out, it is not a policymaking group. It is, we are asking them, "You keep an eye on whether the tax dollars are spent," and these people who live here full-time are the people, the majority of the committee, they are the ones who voted for it. So that was another reason for making it their primary residence.
Any further discussion about the points that have been made by council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I thought I understood it till we started taking it apart. But I guess, one thing that I don't understand, I understand all of the inferences that I am making from what has been said. Since it is an oversight committee, I do believe that whoever sits on that really does need to have skin in the game in this, in this town. They really have to be a stakeholder in what happens and how we behave towards housing in this town, I think. So one thing that confused me was, in the same place where it talks about resident committee members must have a primary address within the Yountville town limits, and a non-Yountville resident whose primary employment is a Yountville business. And then it says, "If a lodging business representative is not available for suitable appointment, that committee position may be filled by a non-designated business representative." So is that just to say that if we couldn't find somebody from lodging, that would be okay? Okay. That was my question.
It would still be a priority that the business be local, but wouldn't have to be lodging. And I think to Councilmember Durham's point, while this is not like the TID, where it's actually kind of the lodging industry's money that they're committing to marketing the community, the way I see that being beneficial is to make sure the lodging community is, continues to be made aware of how the money is being spent, since they are the ones generating it. It's an additional 1 percent on their room tax. So this would guarantee that the industry has a representative involved in that. Could we oversee this without a lodging representative? Yes, I think so. It's more of a guarantee to make sure they're aware, but I don't know that that's really, it's not a critical piece to me, but it's a recommendation that we've made.
And just, just a, excuse me, sorry.
Go ahead. Councilmember Durham?
Just to point to that, though, they pay 10 percent into our general fund, and they're not, they don't sit at the table to discuss how we spend that 10 percent. So that's just a comment. What I would like to see then, and once again, it's not to narrow people down, is then make it two non-designated business representatives and let the hotels step up. My concern is that we're going, because I've seen it. I mean, I own a hotel, I'm on plenty of committees with hotel owners and people, is you get the general manager, because it says, it doesn't say the owners, it says the general manager. And you get the general manager who's showing up for a meeting when they need to go back and worry about the schedule, and they're just not participating to the level that we expect from this oversight committee. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller, you had more?
Yeah, I'm still, I still, I agree with that, that, you know, let's see, let's cast a wider net, and maybe we'll get, you know, two lodging people here. I want to be a little more open and inclusive, and we actually do have, outside of the town limits, there are some people, I think they're out on State Lane, who are actually in a voter block, because when I was campaigning one time, I checked it, and there's actually people who, that John Tudor has designated are Yountville voters, and they don't even live within our jurisdiction. So voting blocks sometimes, it's not a lot, there's probably like five or six people or households out there. So I just think I would like to see something a little less restrictive that, you know, much like we allow all of our other committees. So I just, I just don't, I think this is a great committee to have, I have no problem with that, but it just seems to be going another step beyond where we do for everybody else. So if we could come up with something that was, you know, just leave it as a Yountville resident and let them check a box, I think that's, that's what I would rather see.
Vice Mayor, do you have additional?
I mean, I'm not going to not vote for the committee simply because we changed the language, but I feel pretty strongly that it should be someone, and if we wanted to change it to voting here, but to me, that really puts too much, then we have to have the voter ID and this and that. So, you know, I can go either way, but I very strongly feel that it should be someone who lives here full-time, because we are looking at infill, we are looking at the very fabric and character of the neighborhood, and I just feel very strongly about that.
I would support the idea of having three full-time residents. I agree with the Vice Mayor's point on that. I think this is also a critical enough issue that it does benefit having full-time residents participate in the oversight. But I can also see Councilmember Durham's point about the lodging designee not needing to be purely lodging, that the business community can be represented by any local business. I'd be certainly open to that modification. Further discussion?
And I'm also open to non-designated business representatives, and we could simply take out the last sentence in the red line that talks about a lodging business representative and just say they need to be, seats may be filled by a non-Yountville resident whose primary employment is with a Yountville business.
And just, just hold on, Councilmember Mueller, as soon as Gary's finished writing, I'm going to ask if, is there language that could be considered that would allow if any, if either of the business representative positions cannot be filled, can we have a backup to say, if no viable candidate from that category is, has applied, then there can be determination to go to somebody that's not a business representative?
Yes, that's possible. Another option might be to just say, five members total that may be filled with any combination of these, and then the council could decide when they come up.
Okay. Just in case we're almost to reach a decision, he's thrown a whole new thing in there. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I still don't see why we would, if somebody was a Yountville resident and they, their primary employment was a Yountville business, why would they be excluded from being a business representative? I just think that's, I don't understand that part.
I don't think that's what we're saying at all.
It says, "A non-Yountville resident whose primary employment is with a Yountville business." So my...
Can be a non-Yountville resident. If it's a Yountville resident that works for a local business, they would certainly be qualified as well. Is that what I'm hearing you?
It's the permissive "may." It may be filled by, so it doesn't have to be, it may be filled by a non-Yountville resident, so...
That's similar to our Arts Commission, where someone who does not live here but is active in art...
Right, no, I understand that.
So we have a precedent for that type of designation.
No, I, I understand that, but can't we just say, you know, that the seats with an asterisk could be an applicant whose primary employment is with a Yountville business? Wouldn't that do the same thing? Not look, I wouldn't want somebody to think that they couldn't apply to this, by the way it's worded.
I'm not clear on what it is that you feel is inappropriate in the language, so could you repeat that?
It's just the word "may." It's very, it's not "shall," it's "may." I understand that. It's a legal thing. I think that a lot of people who may be applying may not understand the difference in enforcement of "may" versus "shall." So I just don't see why we couldn't just put, you know, an applicant whose primary employment is with a Yountville business, because that's the real onus.
I think it's quite clear, I think it's clear in the beginning of that sentence, if a representative is not available or suitable, I don't see there being any lack of clarity that says, "If we can't find somebody under that category, then we can go to somebody else." I think it's fairly explicit, myself. But other thoughts from other council?
I really liked the way Gary phrased it, that it will consist of five people, which shall be made up of these, you know, either a full, either a full-time resident or a business owner, or someone who works as their primary job for a business in Yountville. I don't know.
And not designate how many of which category?
Well...
Just leave it up to the discretion of the council when we appoint them?
I think so. I think that...
That's, Gary, that's what you said, correct? Correct.
I think so.
I could support that. I like that flexibility.
What did you say? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Anyway, I think that, you know, the likelihood is that the lodging industry representatives may be interested, since it is something that, you know, they, although it's not a tax on them, they did support it through the visit Napa Valley and everything, so they might be very interested in what's, you know, to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing with it. But nonetheless, I think it, you know, most of the other councils and commissions that we have, I think that we, you know, people who are interested in a certain thing like park and rec or the Arts Commission and whatever their, you know, work with the arts are, they come in. And I think that this, I don't think that we'd have a hard time filling the five positions, no matter how we construct it, so. But I think I really like the idea of it not having such a tight imposition, you know, categorization thing.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before I ask for a motion? Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Dornbecker, could I ask you to clarify? Are you saying five people, all of whom are either, have a primary residence here or a primary place of employment here?
Yes.
And I'm fine with that. I will tell you, our reasoning for the three residents was because that is the voter, and we wanted to make sure that they had a majority, but I'm fine with five, and let the council decide.
Any further discussion? Their motion, then? Councilmember Dornbecker, did you want to make that?
Oh, could he?
You came pretty close just now.
All right, just a moment.
Gary will help if necessary.
Yes.
Maybe Gary would even offer a language that you were agreeing to.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve establishing a Workforce Housing Oversight Committee through adoption of Resolution Number 19-3542, establishing the town Yountville Measure S Affordable and Workforce Housing Ordinance Oversight Committee made up of five, five residents or people who work in Yountville as their, and/or five people who live, work as their primary, you're much better at this.
Well, their primary employment is in Yountville or their primary residence is in Yountville.
That's right.
That works.
And Gary could...
You had it.
...admit it slightly if necessary. Or do you have the, do you want to just read it back and then, Councilmember Dornbecker, say that's what I meant?
Yes. What I would recommend is to recital C in the resolution and also in the policy, the second underlying section, committee membership comprised as follows, to read, "Town council has determined that the committee membership shall be comprised of five members from a combination of the following categories. First one, Yountville community residents. Second one, those having a, their primary employment at a Yountville business."
That's it. So moved.
Okay. So that is the motion, Vice Mayor?
I would second, but I want to clarify, I thought it was primary residence and primary employment.
Correct.
I think that's right.
I didn't hear "primary" on community residence.
Okay. Primary for both.
Okay. Then, yes, I will...
That is the intent of the motion, right?
Yes.
And I will second, thank you.
Okay. Did you hit your button?
Oh, sorry.
And please cast your vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you for the conversation. I think that works out. Sometimes less is more with the format.
No, with this, counsel.
Staff informational report, we have a presentation about the electronic document management system update.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an update on our electronic records management project, and we last presented an update to council on October 2nd, and this is a continuation of that update. And here, the latest items or most recent items that we have completed are migration of the town documents from our OneDoc stop to our Laserfish system, and since the staff... of the town documents from our OneDocStop to our Laserfish system, and since the staff report, we have, writing of the staff report, we have completed that migration. And we've also hired the records coordinator, and he's been working on planning department's rolled plans, has come up with 65 to 75 maps that have been identified for scanning, and over 100 that are eligible for disposal due to being duplicates or non-final maps. He, he will continue to work with planning on a few more sets this Friday to identify more that can be either scanned or disposed of. In addition, I have a couple more things here. I received some questions from Councilmember Dorum, Dorman, Vice Mayor Dorman, regarding the migration, and when we can actually start scanning existing paper documents, maps excluded that aren't in OneDocStop currently. And we haven't started to scan additional documents yet, because we're still in our testing phase. And in the testing phase, those documents would not be retained when we go live, so we would have to redo it. So, the things that we're putting in there now are mostly test documents. When we get the documents scanned, they'll be imported into the system once that department file plan is built. And then there's a question about completing input of all existing documents, whether from OneDocStop or scanning, and I think, as I mentioned, they've all been converted and saved. And the remaining documents will take roughly two to three years, time permitting. It's a very large process to go through, to go through all the hard copies, takeout paperwork that isn't required as part of the final, and get rid of all the working or draft-type documents within each of those files. I just spent probably the last hour and a half today going through five affordable housing files, just to do like a sampling of the amount of time it would take, and it went pretty well, but it brings up questions, and we wanna make sure we're capturing all the vital information that we want, that's part of the final document that will be stored in the Laserfish repository. As I was doing that work, I was consulting with the town attorney, since he had office hours today. So, I think that's what we'll do as we go along, when we run into things, before we, because the ultimate goal is, once we have scanned and indexed these records into the Laserfish repository, we wanna destroy those records. So, before destruction, we're just gonna have the attorney take a look, departments, and just kinda make sure we're, we've captured the right information to do that. Then there was a question on going live on documents when, as we generate or receive them. I hope that we can go live by the end of this fiscal year, it seems like we're on track to do that. And currently, in terms of scanning, there's an integration between Legistar and Laserfish that, right now, allows us to do basically a one-click and export our agenda packet, which is the agenda and staff reports, into Laserfish. The current practice is, we would export to Legistar, then a staff person would combine all the staff report and attachments for a file, and then they would have saved them into OneDocStop, and so it was a very, very laborious process. So, that already has saved time in, in doing this. And then there was a question on, what's our policy on scanning in document drafts or early versions? Laserfish is only a repository for final documents, and I think the example was raised in terms of, for example, resolution like we had tonight, there was a resolution attached as presented, then subsequent revisions were made, and how are we gonna track that? So, that information would be tracked, people would just have to look at the final, and then they could, you know, when they do a query, they'll break, you know, it will pull from agendas, it will pull from resolutions, and they, people can see and compare that way. They can see what was submitted to council initially, and then they can see how it's changed. The idea is that it's, all the documents are gonna be OCR, which is Optical Character Recognition Scan, and so it should be able to draw from minutes, staff reports, and resolutions, and you should be able to have a complete package of how we arrived at the end product. We are also setting up the public portal, which we are very excited about, and we, just right before we finished the staff report, we got the first draft of what the public portal will look like. And we went out and reviewed a lot of different cities and county websites on how their public portals looked, and we liked, it was the city of La Quinta, it seemed to be the most user-friendly in terms of residential viewing, instead of just giving you a Laserfish repository and people having to figure out how to search, you would click on agendas, or you would click on resolution ordinances, and it's gonna take you to that. So, what we found in our process so far is, we built our department file plan a certain way, we now may have to add a couple of subfolders to meet that requirement that the public can see it, so we have a conference call on Thursday to go over some of those things. And then there was a question about training, and we will be providing training, we'll have 27 staff members for admin, we'll also provide training to council, and to be determined in what format, individually, partial group, less than a quorum. So, we're really excited about the project. Other things that are a part of this, I've talked about the scanning of paperwork, records, we also have workflow development as part of this contract, and that will occur after all of the department file plans are built. So, for example, a workflow/business practice will be, one of the first ones we'll attempt to do is contracts, possibly resolutions and ordinances, so that we can have digital signatures on those, instead of rounding them by hand. So, that'll be a workflow that we have built, so we want our department file plans built in order to develop the workflows to go along with that. We also, earlier this year, attended training, it's an annual training put on in Long Beach by Laserfish, the corporation, not ECS, our VAR, value-added retailer, and the clerk attended, management fellow, and records coordinator attended, and it was pretty amazing. It was such a well-done conference, a lot of various hands-on courses, I've never seen so many laptops in a huge auditorium setup, and so it was quite a, quite a showing from Laserfish. So, what we're hoping to do is rotate staff through those trainings. I don't need to go every year, but every other year, so we would like key staff who are gonna be designated as the people responsible for indexing records in Laserfish, to have the opportunity to go, because we wanna be able to expand the bandwidth of staff and using this software, it just can't be in the clerk's department of one and a half. So, we want all departments to have the skills to use that training. I didn't mention some of the courses that they tell you, it's core functions of Laserfish, how to do workflows, how to do quick fields, which automatically fill in, forms, administration, and security. So, Laserfish is a very powerful system, and there's lots of training, and we should stay current with that, so that we can get the best out of our Laserfish. And that concludes my report, does any, are there any questions? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, Councilmember Dornbacher, question?
I do, and that is, actually, I, it popped into my head when I was looking at the maps that are being prepared to be destroyed, and I was wondering, you know, are we sure that there's no historic pieces of, that we should preserve? And now, and talking, thinking about it, you know, we were incorporated in 1965, we're going to keep the original incorporation papers, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, John is, has been very good at the maps, he's looked through, picking out things that are historical and that we may want to retain. Jacob, who does our GIS, he's also noticed that, and going through some of the public works maps, why they might not be the final version of whatever, they still might have historical value, and so we do have a record category in our retention schedule that addresses historical records, so we'll be figuring out how we present those. And I forgot, I had a prop that I presented at our all-staff meeting, is we found a rolled map that was probably the width of this room, that said, "Town council meeting tonight." And Jennifer Carvelo said they used to post it at the Little League field, and she said they also would have it on a truck and drive around town. So, that was kind of a cool thing that I shared with everyone, it was a little fun.
Joe, don't get any ideas.
Well, thank you, that was a concern.
So, we are, we are paying attention to that, and we, we're going to maintain hard copies of the maps for town infrastructure, in case power's out and we don't have those, so we are thinking of those types of measures to preserve some of those records that we might need access to.
Thank you.
Other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our meeting reports, comments, et cetera. Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District did meet today. Basically, it was to accept an updated Napa County Stream Maintenance Program and adopt a mitigated negative declaration based on its findings. Napa Valley Transportation Authority meets tomorrow, and Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, is there anything for a report?
Yes, we are, let's see, what is today, March, well, just advance notice, shredded day, in honor of Earth Day is April 19th, from, so Friday, 2 to 4, West America Bank. We are having a hazardous household waste event for residents at the recycling center just up the road behind Rutherford Grove, and the day before, and the 26 businesses can recycle and bring their hazardous household waste. And I just wanted to also report that we're having some compliance issues up at Clover Flat, our, the county LEA has given repeat violations, and that's risen to the very top of our agenda, dealing with that, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
Okay, thank you. Other meetings attended by councilmembers? I will go ahead and give a report on League of California Cities and the National League of Cities activities. I did go back to Washington DC for the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference, and we met with eight different members of the Senate and House of Representatives. One of the most fulfilling, I would call it, was an hour with Senator Dianne Feinstein, and we were advocating on behalf of trying to get more FEMA support for natural disaster victim cities like Paradise, California, and others, to get money faster and potentially more money. Also, we had breakout sessions that principally, stop me if you've heard this before, are about housing. Also, Opportunity Zones was one of the most heavily attended meetings. There are two Opportunity Zones in the city of Napa, which are nationally designated or federally designated areas that allow investment, tax-free investment, using capital gains taxes, or capital gains, that would be tax-free as long as they're invested in these zones, either in land acquisition and/or business development. So, those were, and also, infrastructure was discussed, but also, it seemed to be a universal understanding that it was unlikely there's a political will in Washington to pass an infrastructure, infrastructure package this year, given such a short term, before everyone stops doing any business and starts campaigning. So, that will be to watch. Also, some developments with the League of California Cities, as I mentioned earlier, we should expect changes to our regional housing needs allocation numbers. We also, at least, have received some support at the, at the local level from Governor Newsom's trailer bill, that was just introduced this last week. There is additional money for planning of housing development, and that speaks a little bit to what Sandra was talking about, it's not just about planning, but you actually have to build. So, there's some, and there's also $500 million in incentives for cities that do reach their housing milestones. Again, if you've heard this before, it's 'cause you've heard this before, they have not defined what those milestones are, but they're supposed to be really, really important. The Association of Bay Area Governments, of which we're a part of, A-BAG, and that's where our housing allocation numbers come from, may be responsible for finding 80,000 units of housing under this new criteria. I could not find out what the current number is, but that's, that's a substantial increase as a region, so we can expect a much bigger requirement for housing in Napa County. There's a lot more information that was shared, but some of it's gonna disappear, depending on what legislation moves forward. There, the one housing bill to watch more than any is SB 50, Senate Bill 50, from Senator Weiner. It is potentially very punitive to local jurisdictions as it relates to housing control. It's been amended, but the League's position is still to oppose unless other amendments are made, and so that's something that we need to continue to watch. There's a hearing due on April 1st with, and Senator Weiner happens to be the chair of the Housing Committee, so it's all been guaranteed to pass through that committee and go on to the next one that is chaired by Senator McGuire from Healdsburg. So, all continued to update, all of us, as I learn more through the League and my participation in Sacramento. We've already had the Upper Valley Waste Management. Any other reports or announcements from us?
I just have one question, please. The, the date for the hazardous waste for you?
It's actually Good Friday, April 19th, from 2 to 4 p.m. at West America. We have.
At West America?
Oh, you're talking about the hazardous?
Yeah.
Okay, April 27th for residents.
April 27th, and is that up at the corp yard?
No, it is at where the recycling is, behind Rutherford Grove Winery, off of Silverado Trail. It's now called Pistone Estates or something.
Okay.
But you can't miss it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention a few more things. We had, we enjoyed a very successful Fifth Annual Yountville Live this last weekend. There was sold-out attendance on all levels of the tickets, and it doesn't hurt when the weather's in the mid-70s, but it was really a very well-attended and enjoyable festival of music, food, and wine here in town. Another way that we like to enjoy our, our food and wine is supporting the Yountville Elementary School. The Red and White Gala is coming up this Saturday. There might be a few more tickets, Samantha, do we think there are more tickets available? At least individual tickets? So, there is a Red and White website that you can check out. Yountville Little League opening day was rescheduled due to weather to Saturday, March 30th. And I also wanted to recognize, I was in Washington and missed this, but recognize all the folks that, from the town staff and our community volunteers who organized, and the members of the public who attended the one-year anniversary remembrance of the three women that were killed a year ago, March 9th. The media reports that I saw, and the conversations people have had, it said that it was a very beautiful and appropriate and very well-attended remembrance, and thanks to our team, Samantha and others, who moved out of the rain and into the community hall to hold that, so thanks to everyone that participated there. Any other business for tonight? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn until our next regular meeting, Tuesday, April 2nd, at 6 p.m.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, and good night.